All right. Good evening. I'm calling to order the 7:30 PM regular meeting of the Town and Court of Madera Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, June 27, 2017. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. Would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Metcalfe?
Here.
Commissioner Bundy?
Here.
Commissioner Chase?
Here.
Commissioner Friedman?
Here.
Commissioner Caldera?
Here.
All right. Before we get into public comment and so forth, I am going to ask the other commissioners if they might make a motion to take one item from reports and announcements, which would be a resolution of appreciation for Niccolo Caldera to something we would address at this point right now in the meeting.
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
All right. So be it. Voice vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Aye.
So what we have here is a certificate of appreciation for this gentleman over here, Niccolo Caldera. He has been with us for a couple of years, and it's been great to have him on board, but he has opted out to take care of his life, so to speak. And it's an important choice, but his choice to join us was fabulous, and we appreciate that. So we have a resolution that I would like to read, and then I'll hand it to the other commissioners to read the "whereas" parts. So this is a resolution of the Court of Madera Planning Commission expressing appreciation to Niccolo Caldera for his outstanding service to the Town of Cordera as a member of the Planning Commission.
Whereas Niccolo Caldera served on the Court of Madera Planning Commission for two years, from July 2015 through July 2017 -- June through 2017, and...
Whereas Niccolo generously contributed his valuable professional expertise and in-depth knowledge as a practicing architect in matters of architectural design and construction, and...
Whereas Niccolo carefully considered all aspects of every project heard before the commission, and regularly met with staff to seek clarity on projects, large and small, so that all parties received a fair and open-minded hearing, and came away from the process knowing that they had been heard, and...
Go ahead.
Whereas Niccolo brought his energy and enthusiasm to all Planning Commission proceedings, and consistently advocated for designs that improve fire and life safety, structural safety, and accessibility compliance, and...
Okay. I want to read that "whereas."
Whereas Niccolo always brought his delightful personality, congeniality, mutual respect, and consideration of others' viewpoints to all Planning Commission meetings, and...
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Planning Commission of the Town of Cordera hereby expresses its deep gratitude for Niccolo Caldera's contributions and leadership as a member of the Planning Commission. Be it further resolved that the Planning Commission wishes Niccolo and his family the best of luck and happiness in their future endeavors. Passed and adopted by the Planning Commission of the Town of Cordera at a regular meeting thereof, held on the 27th day of June 2017 by the following vote. Voice vote?
Approved.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So Niccolo, we thank you greatly, and we'll miss you. So that said, we're going to all sign it and pass it to you, and you'll hang it on your wall, I'm sure. So at this point in the meeting, having dispensed with that incredibly -- actually, I'm honored, and I sort of choke, thank you, element, we then move on to public comment. So at this point, anybody who wishes to comment on something that is not on the agenda tonight can stand up with a microphone. You have three minutes to make a statement and say something that you'd like to about something that's not on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to do that tonight? All right. Seeing none, then, we will close the public comment section. Tonight, we have two continued hearings. The first one is the Marin Montessori School. So I'm going to read it out for the record. 5200 Paradise Drive, continued public hearing to consider a resolution which forwards a recommendation to the Cordera Town Council to adopt an initial study mitigated negative declaration, a general plan amendment, rezoning, amendment to the current use permit, and design review for additions and modifications to the Marin Montessori School at 5200, 5168, and 5164 Paradise Drive. So at the last meeting, we asked the staff to draft a resolution. They've worked hard on getting elements into it, and I'll let Mr. Boyle go ahead and take it from here.
Thank you, Chairman Chase. Yes, this is the third public hearing for this item. As Chairman Chase mentioned, we did bring a resolution, which is in the packet, based upon the recommendations from the last meeting. I'll just briefly go over the project. The entitlements are for a general plan amendment, zoning amendment, to change from residential to semi-public facilities, design review for the new construction and remodels of some of the existing buildings, an amendment to their conditional use permit, because the campus itself will change physically, and then the sequel analysis, which is required. And that was an initial study and mitigated negative declaration. Project does not include any increases in students or staff, renovating the residential buildings next door, the drop-off and pickup cul-de-sac will be expanded, three new parking spaces will be added, and a new elementary school classroom will be built, replacing the two domes that are currently there, and that's part of Phase Two. In terms of what has -- just a very quick site plan. Existing campus to the left, new residential to the right. The domes are just above the cul-de-sac there. They're gone, obviously, in this picture, and the new classroom is shown. New conditions of approval from the last meeting that staff added. Staff worked closely with the Cordera Department of Public Works, and also with Marin Montessori, and also some discussions with Marin Country Day, in that the Cordera Public Works Department will work with both schools to install speed limit notification signs, and I'll give you a picture of those in a second. Also, the applicant will provide -- will install three new trees to the -- where the trees had died when they -- this is on the northwest corner of the campus, next to the north building. I'll show a visual of those. Marin Montessori has also agreed to extend the drop-off and pickup cul-de-sac as part of Phase One, so they'll hopefully mitigate traffic as quickly as possible during Phase One and not wait for Phase Two for the cul-de-sac to be expanded or the bulb. Marin Montessori is going to add one more parking space, so they will have a total of 41 parking spaces on-site to accommodate their 40 employees. All conditions of approval also for Phase One are required to be completed before issuance of a building permit of Phase Two, and these were all directions from the council at the previous meeting. Sorry, the commission at the last meeting. So this is our speed notification sign, example of one. This on Tamalpais Avenue. Again, it's run solar-powered, shows the driver, you know, their current speed, flashes if the driver's current speed is above the speed limit. The idea is to place one of these west of Marin Country Day and one east of Marin Montessori, an appropriate place for -- and that'll all be directed by the Town Public Works Department. In terms of other -- the other condition of approval, this is indicating the three new trees that will be installed. Again, as the applicant said last time, they installed three of them. Two of them died. I think three of them died. One's still there. So the last one will be removed, and these three will be installed to reduce the -- to provide them screening to that existing building. Lastly, a visual just showing that the extended bulb or cul-de-sac, the red dashed, is the larger cul-de-sac that will happen. So that's the expanded bulb that they will do as part of Phase One, and as you can see, they're able to keep the -- you know, the domes will still be there, but they're able to expand that by just kind of pushing out. So again, providing some additional stacking room for drop-off and pickup. I also wanted to bring to your attention, I put in a radish sheet, there are a couple of changes to the resolution, some minor -- a couple typos and some minor things that the applicant brought to our attention and staff saw. So those changes will be made to the resolution if approved by the commission. So staff is able to make the findings and recommends that the commission forward the resolution, which is recommending approval of the project to the town council. And I have on the screen the findings, if you're interested in those, for both the conditional use permit and design review. The applicant is here, if you have questions of them or want a presentation from them. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. Other commissioners, after seeing this new paperwork or reconsidering, reading the staff report, do you have any questions for us to ask at this time?
No, I do not.
Yeah, Phil, I would defer to, you know, traffic engineer, but my observation is the speed warning signs are usually on straightaways to encourage people to slow down, and flashing signage really is to warn people of an unseen danger ahead. I'm a little concerned that cyclists may see -- want to see how fast they can go down that stretch as they come there. So again, I would defer to a traffic engineer, but most of the times when there's a -- not a blind intersection, but something that you really can't see as a danger, a flashing light might be a more appropriate one that would be flashing when school is pickup or drop-off, and maybe just a regular light during the day and off at night, or dim at night, something like that.
Means you just maybe a flashing yellow?
Yeah. Mostly what I see is flashing yellow, and it'll be a warning about a school or cross-road or cross-traffic or something like that, that you can't anticipate as you're coming around a bend.
Okay. Thank you.
Phil, would you direct me to where it says in the paperwork that they're going to work with Public Works to create this plan for their area? I've read it.
Sure. That is in the resolution, condition of approval...
I think that's right. Wait, three?
Three. Page 11, condition number three. Page 11, condition of approval number three.
All right. Okay.
Okay.
Where it says the DBW shall be the lead in implementing the installation of the signs. The paragraph starts off by saying the Marin Montessori School shall work with the Town of Cordera, blah, 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 and then there is some traffic study information we'll talk about in a bit, but there is some language somewhere that talks about how this will be implemented by a management study, correct, somewhere in here? I remember reading that.
Well, number four talks about a traffic study, a joint study with both schools. Number three does not talk about a study for number three.
Right. Okay.
But certainly it's something -- thank you. There's certainly something we can, you know, we can talk about. The Director of Public Works and the Town Manager talked about this, and they didn't indicate that a study would necessarily be required, and they did think of this as one possible solution. Again, there are obviously many different solutions.
Okay. All right. We'll come back to it. All right. Thank you, Bob. Jennifer?
Yeah, I think my only question was in the same lines of just how do we decide on what the correct or best traffic calming approach would be? So maybe that...
I'm sorry. I missed the first part.
Just how do we decide, or was that recommended in the traffic study? And maybe I missed that piece of it.
Yeah, it was not -- so this was not recommended in any traffic study.
Okay.
This was just a discussion with Public Works.
Do you think that this is the most effective traffic calming approach?
Yes.
Okay.
That was their opinion at this time.
Okay. I'll defer to them as the experts, so...
Okay.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Niccolo?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay. It'll come up later in the meeting when I talk about attending the city council, but for the other commissioners and for the public and for the record, Dave Bracken presented a fair amount of information and discussion at the council meeting, as I brought up to them, and they highlighted the Paradise at Prince Royal Passage pedestrian crossing, the Paradise Drive bikeway extension, the Paradise Drive sidewalk replacement. All are in the budget for next year. So they're creating this plan. They're working on it for the whole area. It's not all going to happen at once, but clearly it's in the next three budget years to deal with this area.
So the plan is to install a signal, a traffic signal, at Paradise and Robin Drive?
No.
No? Okay. Sorry, I misunderstood that. Okay.
Phyllis?
Since Jennifer mentioned the traffic signal, I was thinking with the flashing light that you had mentioned, Bob, maybe there could be a sign that could say yield for pedestrians along with the flashing light.
So I think that the Town Public Works Director and working with Caltrans or whomever should best create, implement that plan, is that fair to say? Are you guys agree with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. That Dave Bracken deciding what is the right signage, what is the best signage, and what to go there. But we have it in the record that there will be signage and there will be a blinking light, and how it gets installed is something you guys will...
Yeah. At this, I mean, just to be -- at this point in time, the requirement as a condition of approval relates to this sign.
Right.
Moving forward, obviously, I think as you mentioned, there are -- the Public Works is looking at Paradise Drive. They have specific project implementation, capital improvement projects in their budget for next year, mostly related in this area, a specific area to the shared path on the south side of the street. But they're continually be looking at how to best implement appropriate measures and signage in this area.
Okay. So we'll come back to this condition. It says that the DBW shall be the lead in implementing the installation of the signs within the 2017-2018 fiscal year.
Yes.
So that's rather immediate.
Yes.
Okay.
I wanted to give an update of that. That last sentence may change, given discussions with Public Works in terms of other priorities and budgetary issues, so may not be able to hold to that 2017-2018 fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Yes, and thank you. That should probably -- that should be struck from that condition, the last sentence, and I apologize for not bringing that up earlier. That last sentence in condition of approval number three should be struck at this point, given that we're not able to unequivocally say that.
Just the last phrase?
Pardon me?
The whole sentence or just the last phrase, starting with "within"?
Oh, I'm sorry. Ending, yeah. Within the 2017-2018 calendar fiscal year should be struck. So ending with -- ending period at signs.
So they will be the lead in implementing the installation of the signs, period?
Yep. Thank you.
Okay.
Phil, did you say that sign is definite, the one that shows the speed of the cars?
That is, again, that is the direction I have received from the Department of Public Works.
So that is what the condition says, the condition of approval says. So unless there's a, for some reason, a change at some point in the future that we are unaware of at this time, but we can't speak to that happening, but this sign, yes, as a condition of this approval, we'll have it.
All right. So we can hear the applicant and hear the public comment, and then we'll discuss that. How's that?
Okay.
We can address it as a part of the condition of approval. So that said, it's time for the presentation by the applicant.
Hi.
Do we have a microphone? Would you test that, please?
Testing.
Yeah, it's on.
Good evening. My name is Felix Aoyang. I'm a trustee on the board of the Marin Montessori School. I'm here in place of Sam Shapiro, the head of school, who is out on a well-deserved vacation with his family at the start of the summer break. And with me here are members of our design team and members of the larger MMS community, including staff, parents, and students. I don't have a lot, and I want to keep this short, because we've already had two extended meetings on this topic, and we don't have any substantive changes, but I do want to thank the Planning Commission for the two past meetings. I know they were super long, and they were following other larger items, in that even though it was late, you provided both the school and the neighbors the opportunity to express what -- how we felt about the proposal. And I want to thank you for that. I also want to recognize Sam Shapiro, and I think in his day job, he has an excellent job leading the school for the last two years. And in his second job, he has done very well representing the school and presenting our proposal. And I think that from those two meetings, hopefully, you can see that Sam is an amazing listener and also a doer, and that the school, within the things that we have control over, have tried our best to mitigate our impact and be good neighbors to our community. That said, I think our specific proposal will improve upon the existing conditions. It will improve one of our facilities, and it does not change our enrollment. And we have reviewed the conditions of approval, and with the edits that the staff has proposed, we are in agreement with those conditions, and we look forward to your decision tonight.
All right. Don't go anywhere yet, Felix.
Sure.
Thank you for that. So first off, I'm going to ask the other commissioners if they have any questions. Of you specifically, is there anyone else from the school who will speak for the school tonight?
Only to address questions that are asked by you.
Okay. All right. So, Phyllis, do you have any questions for this gentleman?
No, I think we've covered them all already.
All right. Dr. Bundy?
Yeah, just one question. Recognize the promise and the need to fulfill that promise to replace those trees. We've had a lot of discussions here about black-crowned night herons and their roosting habits, and it would be nice if the trees that were used to replace the trees that died, and I think there was a comment that the willow tree that was there was unhealthy, if they were replaced with trees that potentially might be useful for black-crowned night herons from the standpoint of either eucalyptus, the ironbark eucalyptus, or the willow trees. I think those are also helpful if -- and they seem to do well in brackish water if they're planted in enough soil. So just my comment.
And I'm looking at Helen, our architect, to take notes, to provide to our... Yeah, landscape...
If you're going to come up and say anything you got to say at the microphone, and then you need a course in black-crowned night herons, but if you have that, great.
I do not.
Address it, and however you wish to address that comment.
This is Helen Schneider with Fowlong Architecture. The school has been working with an arborist to replace those three trees and to choose trees that will live a longer life than the willows did. So I know a strawberry tree is one of them that has been brought up by the arborist, but we can also address the -- we can bring up the heron issue with them and see if they have other suggestions.
So the plan at the moment is to put in the strawberry trees? And that's where it's...
That's one of the trees that the arborist suggested.
Okay. So you're open or will consider something and propose it to the planning department if it's not specific? I thought it was. It's open in the plan?
It is open in the plan. This is the plan in front of you here. I don't believe the applicant has specified a particular tree at this moment.
Okay. All right. Phyllis?
It was my understanding that the trees were there to provide some privacy for the neighbors.
Right. The strawberry tree would be an evergreen tree.
And I would hope that whatever trees are chosen would fulfill that, because that has been an issue for several years.
It is a priority. Right. So, yeah. And they'd have to pick a specimen or purchase specimens to start out with, you know, certain size, yeah. Okay. That's important. Jennifer?
Thank you for coming tonight. So I hate to raise this as a somewhat new issue, but it occurred... What? I think so. Am I speaking too softly? Sorry. So I was just saying, I don't know if this ever came up, if you guys thought about this, or maybe this is actually a question for Phil, but because so many of the neighbors have focused on the traffic issues, and I wonder, I know at this point it looks like you guys are five students shy of your limit of 232, but did we ever bring up with Sam or suggest that they would limit their students to be what their current enrollment is, or was that ever considered as part of a new conditional use permit?
I do not believe that. It's been brought up by the commission in the last three hearings.
Okay. I don't need to bring it up now. I was just curious if you had any -- if you guys had ever thought about that, or as a give, I guess.
We would like to keep our current enrollment cap.
Okay.
Just for the flexibility of it.
Okay. Understood.
Yeah. Niccolo, any questions?
No. No questions. Thank you.
All right. I think that, if I may summarize, a couple things that have come up, that the conditions that the planning department has put before you guys have been in response to our comments and to public comment responses. And they refer back to a number of past instances, past resolutions and so forth, and you guys are really on the spot here, if this gets approved, to go forward with this stuff and sort of put your best foot forward. The school has to do that at this point. There are community members who feel like that hasn't happened, and it's in writing now, and it's pretty specific. So I think that the commission feels very beholden to the community for this stuff, and the school should as well. And I think there's enough checks and balances in here to do that, but it's really incumbent upon the school to address all this stuff that is somewhat fallen by the wayside, and to really work with Marin Country Day's school to keep the traffic from being a bigger problem than it is. And it's not done yet, so there's going to be a study when you're done, and there'll be more implications or more ramifications of the traffic study, I'm sure, when Phase One and Phase Two are complete, as it says in condition four. So do you have anyone else that we would like to have to speak for the school at this point?
No, we do not.
Okay. All right. Again, last chance, commissioners, for this gentleman.
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We'll open it to a public comment now. So if you have a comment to make about the project, we've heard from a lot of people, but please, you have three minutes. Step up to the microphone.
I'm Carla Condon. I live on 5132 Paradise Drive. I am a member of the town council. However, I've come this evening to speak as a resident. When this particular project comes to the council, if it should, I am restricted from voting at that time. I can only speak as a resident. Historically, I found that all the... Historically, I found that all the past administrations have failed to comply with many of the conditions of approval from 2003. One of them is that they were to turn lights off after dark. However, there are times, many times, when the school lights are kept on, and I'm not talking about the exterior lights, I'm talking about the classroom lights, all night. A week ago, last Sunday, they shone brightly all, all night long. So, that really concerns me. Another thing that concerns me is a very detailed landscape plan was presented in 2003. It never happened. In fact, what is there right now is less than what was there when the building was first built back in '03. So, that concerns me. It affects me and several other of the neighbors. And so, it's just, it's just there, where at once we had the whole shoreline to view. What concerns me is that administration is known for one year that they didn't comply with the landscaping, and no effort has been made to rectify that. And this has made a condition of approval. 14 years later, they've known about it for a year, and nothing has been done, and I would be very sad to see history repeat itself. What is really of dire concern is the safety that this school has, or the lack of safety that this school has created. It was once a small school, the little dome school, then they added a couple of grades, and now it's huge with new buildings, no, no really feasible parking places for the, even the employees, and three, isn't going to make it any better. So, I would really hope that you would reduce enrollment and have some of these conditions met before it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Who else would like to stand up and make a comment? Please step up to the microphone. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Anna Shimko. I am a parent at the school. I simply wanted to mention that in response to Ms. Condon's concerns, which were put in writing, the school did submit a written response, and so that is in the record. I hope that you have had a chance to review it. The school does view the factual situation differently from the way that it was portrayed earlier this evening, and our understanding is that the, the death of the willow trees and the fact that that was a condition of approval has only recently been learned, and as soon as the school got that information, it has hopped on it, certainly intends to comply with conditions. Our understanding is also that while a couple of things may have fallen through the cracks, most of the conditions have been very religiously and clearly held to over the years, and the school absolutely makes the commitment to be very careful about meeting all conditions in the future. One thing I just wanted to mention briefly in terms of enrollment is that the cap of 232 students is based on the pedagogy of the Montessori education. So, unlike in a lot of schools where people are trying to bring down classroom size, the Montessori classrooms are in three age groups, like first, second, and third, fourth, fifth, and sixth. It's very important that there are enough students within each classroom, and the 232 was arrived at by very clearly figuring out how many students are the ideal number of students for each level of the Montessori classrooms. And so, it's incredibly important for us to keep the cap that we do have. Students need to interact with each other. The older, the older students teach the younger ones. They need to have enough students to choose from, to do work together. That's just how a classroom works in Montessori, so that number is quite important to the school as well as the need, as Felix mentioned, to maintain some flexibility. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who else would like to stand up and make a comment tonight? Please do.
I'll be very brief. My name is Dylan Simons. I'm a parent at Marin Montessori School. I spoke to you in the previous hearing. I wanted to say, in response to Commissioner Bundy's comment about the trees and his hope that we would replace the trees with trees that would accommodate the coastal marine ecosystem and specifically the black-crowned night herons. I was fascinated in the previous hearing to listen to the proposal of the new Corte Madera Hotel and the pond that is proposed and the ecosystem improvements that the community would like to see done there. And I just wanted to say, first of all, that as somebody who's studied industrial ecology in graduate school, I have a very keen interest in making sure that this campus is in sync with our local ecosystem and that anything we do, at minimum, is not deleterious to this ecosystem, this microecosystem, and that we have an opportunity to make improvements to it with a project like this. I'll close by saying that as somebody who's spent a lot of time studying trees, the arborist working with the school is obviously going to have to weigh the benefits to the local ecosystem of certain tree species while also taking into consideration some of the characteristics of tree species and how they relate to safety on site. And you had proposed eucalyptus, which is an excellent nesting species for a lot of birds, but happens to be a self-pruning tree that sheds a lot of bark and drops a lot of limbs as it grows. And so, the school is working with the arborist to make sure that we find a balance between safety and ecosystem improvement. And I assure you, we want to have gorgeous trees on this site as well, not only for the privacy that the neighbors would like to enjoy, but also to make sure that these are long-lived trees and they fit in our, the landscape configuration that we're given. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Okay, if anybody's going to speak, please jump up. So, I don't see any jumping. All right, well. Discussion going on back there, but this is it. We're going to close the public hearing comment section of this meeting. All right, thank you. All right, commissioners. We have some discussion to undergo here about a number of items. We have the, the trees, which are called out as possible Queensland brushbox, holly oak, marina strawberry, Saratoga Bay laurel, or silver sheen as possible trees. They're in the staff report, or the response, I'm sorry, from Marin Montessori to the staff. So, there's some good trees that are there, and I would leave it up to the arborist, myself, to determine what's the right tree for that location. But Phyllis's point is screening. Yours is habitat. Habitat and screening.
I'm going to defer to the arborist's recommendations.
Nicola.
I think that I agree with you. Should be up to the expert, and maybe they should follow the original intent of what was supposed to be the, the tree initially. You know, the intention of putting those trees, whether it was a natural environment or, you know, screen.
All right, let me back up for a second here then, because we're at a point where, you know, we have heard a lot. We've asked the staff for a resolution on this, and they've incorporated a lot of stuff, and I feel like it's time to move forward or not. So, I think that we've asked that the teeth be put into the resolution, and I would like to check in with each commissioner to see how you feel about going forward with it and what are your concerns about any modifications to the resolution. So, with that said, I'll start with you, Phyllis.
I agree. It's time to go forward with this. We've discussed this. I would hope that the school, and I know Sam, when he was here, said that they would meet to the best of their ability the conditions from 2003 that may not have been met. And maybe I'd like to suggest they have a meeting with the neighbors and review what those conditions were so everybody's kind of on the same plane at the time. But I think staff has put in all the conditions that we brought up. I would just like to add one thing for Jennifer's benefits, that you were asking about the cap. The school under a previous headmaster came to us in 2012 and asked for 245 students, which we turned down, and I think it was 214, 2014, that they came back and they gave us facts and figures to come up with the 232 cap. So, it has been looked into. It was just not an arbitrary figure.
I'll interject that it, part of previous staff report says that a composite traffic study was a projected increased student enrollment from 209 to 232 in December of 2013. And in 2003, there was a Marin, Marin, Bob Harrison did the transportation planning and thought that the management system worked well for whatever that enrollment was. Presumably, it was 209 at that time, and then that it would, he made some recommendations. And I, one of those recommendations was, consider posting 25 mile-an-hour speed limit in the area and increase enforcement. Anyway, so in the previous staff report, that was in there. So, when it comes to where we are, then, Dr. Bundy, where do you think we are with this, and what do you, would you like to see done or added, if anything, to the conditions?
I'm ready to move forward with the resolution. I would like to have the traffic calming signage listed as approved, either this or another sign approved by Public Works, and I would hope they would consult with some traffic engineers in regard to the best sign. And I defer to the arborist as to the selection of the trees that would go in.
All right, thank you. Jennifer.
I'm supportive of moving forward on this resolution. I think, I'll just say for the record, it's unfortunate that it's been 14 years since the previous administrations did not make good on all of the conditions, but I do think Sam has, in the one or two years that he's been there, from what it sounds like, is, is doing his best to correct some of those. So, I think that the way that this is drafted, I think staff has done a really good job with it, so thank you, Phil, and that it has as many teeth as you can have to hold the school accountable for the various issues that have been raised by the public.
Thank you. Nicola, your thoughts about this?
I'm in concurrence with everyone. Maybe there has to be, unless there is already, a more unofficial identification of the items that have been expressed by several people, of, of some of the conditions that weren't met, and maybe they were not even now in the, in the proposal, and an official list, itemized. And then, and then prior to construction, maybe, if possible, seeing if these items have all been completed or are part of the Phase One process. So, at least that would be, they can begin the Phase One with at least the past closed, you know, in terms of meeting all the conditions.
In the, yeah, just, just to follow up on that, in, in the previous staff report, we did outline the various conditions that were required in, in the past and how, how the school had abided by them or not abided by them or, or fell, fell short. And I, there, there was the one condition that clearly they have never done, and that was to impose some type of fine upon parents who choose not to carpool. And I, I didn't, I didn't get direction from the commission last time if you wanted that condition to be, you know, removed or to be enforced, but I think that's not the only, you know, that's, that's one, you know, concrete condition that clearly has, has not been met, and.
If I can say, I think that it would be, to meet them, I think would be being inconsistent with what was approved. You know, I think it would be an obligation to show that they did meet the conditions, and then they want to appeal it, and maybe saying, well, can we strike this out? But for fairness, I think that, I would say that all the conditions should be at least addressed in one way or another on the, prior to.
By, by the, prior, just so I'm clear, in terms of timing prior to building permit for the first phase?
Well, either prior or because Sam would, you know, maybe be taking a long time or they're part of construction, then could be included into the Phase One and becoming new conditions, maybe.
So, we can, we can identify that a little bit here. So, Nicola, I agree with you on that, that some things, because of their nature, will, would fall into being done before the construction. Some things would occur during, and some things would occur after. But to the point that I'm, when I look back on the 2012 meeting notes, so I think there are things that still need to be done. And when we look at the response from Marin Montessori School, I think that there are things that they can ensure, and we can ensure that they take care of before the project initiates. So, with that said, I'm just going to ask staff here in a second, when they have a moment, to go back to this 2012 meeting where there was a traffic stun, study commissioned or asked for, but that they had not done one and that there had been no money put forth for the town to do it. Is that correct, Phil? I'm reading the March 27th, 2012 final minutes, and it said that they had not gotten funding for this traffic study. That was also Marin Country Day School.
But the preserve hadn't been built.
My, my understanding was that was, so that was in 2012, and then subsequent to that, as part of their request for the CUP and increasing the enrollment, they proceeded to do traffic studies.
That was satisfied in 2014, then?
That's my, that's my understanding.
They, right, they, they did a traffic study, and then they came back for an increase in their cap, and the planning commission approved that increase.
Right. I think I voted for that. So, yeah, we both did. So, all right, that said, I, I can't be more emphatic about the fact that the elements of 2003 need to be addressed. And you've said that specifically in here, that the conditions are a part of the approval from 2003 or inside of these notations, Phil. Is that correct? So, they don't read as though they're from 2003, but they're in here to complete.
Yeah, the condition of approval number two, right? Is that what you're referring to? It, it, the second, the sentence, sorry, second sentence in that paragraph says, "All previous conditional use permit conditions of approval for the operation of Marin Montessori School shall remain in effect" as well as the specifically referenced in this stuff.
So, that said, before you guys give them a billing permit, they have to submit plans, and then you guys will go down this checklist of those items and make sure that what needs to be done prior to construction or is a part of that construction is included in those plans.
If that, I would, I would then include in this, if that's what the commission desires to. to state, that evidence should be provided by the time of building permit, if that's what you, if that's what you're saying.
Right. All right, so I'm gonna look to my left.
To staff.
I hear that you're, that's where you came from, Nicolo, and Jennifer, I think...
I'm supportive of that.
Supportive of that, and you as well, Dr. Bundy, and Phyllis, right? So rather, without going into deleterious detail here, through each condition, there are some that are accomplished, or need to be accomplished before or in plan, right? Before they actually get a building permit, so they have to make sure they're in the plans.
Yes. And, and I just want to point out that, again, from last meeting, staff report, there are a number of conditions, operational conditions, that have been imposed upon the school for many years, you know, such as aggressively pursue carpooling, encourage, discourage parents from dropping off at this location, that location. So there are concrete things, such as trees, that we can easily sign off and say, if the trees are there, you move forward, if they're not, you don't. There are other things that are more of operational nature.
So given that it's in the conditions, and that it is part of the department's enforcement to make sure that they're complied with, you can stop, notice the construction at any time if these conditions are not being met?
Well, I think there's a, there's actually a process in the code that allows us to come back to the commission if need be. We get into a question of whether the building code itself allows us to stop a building permit for such reasons, but yes, I mean theoretically, we're going to, we're going to raise any concerns or issues that they haven't been, if they haven't been addressed, then, then absolutely, we have the ability to, one way or the other, not allow the project to, to move forward.
And just to add to that, what we were just asking for, when Phil explained that there are building conditions, and then there are operational, the building permit can only be tied to those that are construction-related, as Adam just pointed out. It, it can't be like a global holdup of the building permit, if it's an operational, or if it's not a, you know, it's something that, for, that they've not complied with in the past, but we're working with them on compliance going forward. It has to be somewhat related, so we wanted some clarity from you as to what's tied to the building permit.
All right, so then, there has to be some teeth with this. We don't have any teeth in this. We don't have any, no? What do we have to...
So if you want to, in the, in the code, there are specific provisions in the code, 18 dot 26 dot 070, that allows, if conditions of approvals are, have been violated, it allows the commission to bring the, essentially the conditional use permit that has previously been approved, back to the commission for review. And it, it talks about grounds for revocation or modification of that use permit. So that, I mean, that is a, applies to every conditional use permit in, and it lays out in the code how that would actually work. I haven't personally, we haven't, as the commission, at least since I've been, the planning director, haven't seen that process play out, and there may be some questions about the scope of what, in fact, can be modified or revoked, but obviously, that's a, that's, I think, a very concrete thing that could happen in the, in the future for the commission to bring this back in front of the, in another public hearing, and discuss those violations of, of conditions of approval.
So let's play this out. So neighbor complains, says the lights are on, and the parking is awful, and it's not being complied with. So it becomes a complaint to the department.
Right.
The department has to validate it, then the department decides whether to bring it back to the commission or not.
Right, and we first try to work with the applicant and gain compliance through other means and methods, but that's a, if, if we, if that isn't achieved in a timely fashion, then yes, that's, that would be the, I would, that would be my fallback position at that point.
Before I let Phyllis jump in here, so we just heard from this Condon, that the lights have been on weekends and so forth, and yet this has been brought up. So, you know, that's an issue that's been spoken of many times. I don't know if it's verified, or how we verify that, or how we go about this. If, here we are, at this point, saying, or looking at approving this, but, you know, we, we are hearing that the school sometimes leaves lights on all night, so...
So I'll just, I'll just speak to that, in terms of my, my two and a half years here, I've not received a complaint from a neighbor regarding the schools, regarding the lights at Marin Montessori.
But even, we are hearing the complaint right now, so to speak, and the commission is essentially having that hearing, I mean, on what the code says, so, I mean, you, you, that's part of the record, and it's part of your considerations.
So it's in here, and it's up to the school then to comply with it, because it's in the, the conditions of approval?
Well, I don't know, do we have a specific...
There is no, currently, there is no specific condition regarding interior lights for the school.
And it wasn't in 2003?
I'm, I'm not aware of, I can, I can double check, but I'm not aware of a specific condition saying that interior lights need to be turned off at a certain time, but I can cer, I will certainly look into that.
So I would expect that there would be some sort of lights for deterrence, or just, you know, generally, downlighting and security around the building, but not shining out across the bay or anything, but just, say, a security guard walks around the property, you know, he should be able to walk without holding down. So, but it shouldn't be a disturbance to the neighbors, so that's the idea. Phyllis?
I was gonna suggest that maybe we ask to have a report brought to us by our staff, it should be prepared by the school and given to our staff, in about six months to come, to bring it back to the commission and give a report on how many of these conditions have been met, and which ones are being worked on, and which ones are being ignored. And just pick, you know, six months as a time certain that we expect an update.
Yeah. Fair.
That would be a reasonable sort of check-in, rather than just letting this sail into the sunset.
Right.
I did have one suggestion I'd like to ask the other commissioners about, over at the Phase Two building, it says, "Three new staff parking spaces are proposed at 5164 Paradise Drive property." So the school is to be closed on the weekends, and it's closed during the summer, right? So in essence, then, while there might be service people there, this area would not be a place for weekend parking, or service staff parking, or parking beyond the school hours. So...
Correct. If I, I could expand on that, that, all the parking that is proposed on the former residence, so the property to, to the east, that parking is designed only for teachers, and teachers that arrive relatively early, and so there's no in and out at that location, or minimal in and out, and that's due to the safety of that driveway, and disturbance of the kids, they don't want cars coming and going, and I'm sure that, so that, that is the intent of the, of the parking spaces in the former residence.
All right, so that's stated, Phyllis?
I thought when we were there, when you and I did our site visit, that Sam said that would be the three teachers who teach in the former residence, and that the gate would be locked once they arrived in the morning, and I guess when they left at night, or when nobody was there, for the safety of the kids.
All right, so...
So are you asking for, to add a new condition, to lock off or gate off that parking lot at certain other hours?
I, that's what I was inquiring about this, as to potentially add that as a condition, that it's not for anything other than the teachers.
Who are teaching at that particular building?
Teachers at that particular building, right. So that it does not become parking at their desire for any service vehicles, or anything else that may come and go. It is simply parking for that building's use.
Seems perfectly doable to me. I would think that fire department would probably want to have a lock box to be able to get through that gate, and you may wish to ask the applicant if that's manageable to them. I know that would require...
Well, it's just that the gates close, and they stay closed, and somebody may need to leave for something, but it's not gonna be a gate through which people come and go. I don't, I don't know that, you know, locking people in or out is, it's only those cars that would be the teachers, and if they have to leave, they have to leave. You know, but it's just for teacher parking, not for service vehicles, or any other type of vehicles to be parked there.
That's how he presented it to us that day.
But I'd like it in the, in the condition there. So that said, we did get the cul-de-sac into Phase One, I think that's important. I think that, at this point, have you had any indication from the applicant as when they would submit plans for the first phase of this?
No. If I do, I don't recall at this moment.
So I, I think, with your striking of that sentence, that would be out of the, the end of the last sentence of paragraph three on page 11, that would be one other element of a change to the conditions.
And the addition at, on, at two.
Correct. And that we have a six-month report on the conditions of function of the school, rather than, you know, the building department side of it. So it's about the reports of coordination with MCDS, the, and it says the planning staff is supposed to get a summary of the meetings within two weeks of any meetings, and so in a six-month packet, we would see all of those meeting notes.
Okay, I'd like to get a very specific language that we can incorporate.
Where do you want to put it, exactly?
Okay, so I think it, I think what you're asking for in number two, after the last sentence, where it says, "All previous conditional use permit conditions of approval for the operation of Marin Montessori School shall remain in effect," as well as those specifically referenced in this document, you can say, "A, a report prepared by the applicant and..."
Planning department.
"...and submitted to the planning department shall be prepared, indicating that all prior and prior conditions of approval." And I, I should say, we may want to add the word "applicable" prior, because some of them are, have already been...
I agree.
Done, and, and it doesn't make sense to repeat from 2003 that you've already, but all applicable conditions of approval, prior conditions of approval, and those referenced in this resolution shall be identified and addressed as to compliance.
Very well said.
Oh, okay. That's number two, 'cause so hopefully someone wrote that down.
Did you have the six months, that it comes back?
Yes, six months.
And then I'll just add maybe an easy one, all, all items on this errata sheet will be incorporated into the resolution, I'm assuming that is correct, or I won't make it assume, is, is that correct, the wish of the commission? That all changes in the errata be incorporated?
We're in agreement with those, yes. So by voice, we are in agreement with those statements and the changes to the Resolution 17 dash 013.
Okay.
And while I, while I have the mic, I just want to bring the attention, on sheet A1.01, the, the plan set does show a locked gate and knock box for emergency access only to the residential property that we were discussing. So we can certainly add that as a condition, but these are the approved plans, and so the approved plans show a locked gate.
Well, it's the gate, but it's also, I think, the commission was referencing that it's for teachers.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Parking for teachers.
If I could add one comment?
We'd have to reopen it, so...
If it's about the construction, I, I mean, I could add that, I mean, just so you know, I don't know what the purpose of that question was for, but plant, building permit plans have been submitted already, so I assume that they're relatively quickly after, and if the town council would approve, they'd be very quickly sort of submitting for, getting forward. So I, that, I assume that's what...
You knew why that was, Peter was up there, right? Okay.
You gave us a sentence before under two, are you now eliminating it? That evidence should be provided at the time of the building permit being issued. You had that as the original last sentence added onto number two. And now we're talking about the report prepared, you know, at six months.
So, sorry, other conditions of approval specifically reference when those requirements are due. If you wanted to say something, if you wanted to change that, we could discuss changing that.
No, I just want to know if that sentence that starts with "evidence should be provided" is still in?
I don't remember that, what that was, I don't think the commission fully discussed that, whether that was, wanted to be added or not. I would say no, unless the commission wants to add something else there. We did, so we, we have, just so we're clear, we added a sentence in number two, we added the errata, we are at the condition regarding the parking on, sorry, was it, at the former residence? Did anyone write that, you want to repeat that, or for the record?
That the parking at the former residence shall be for...
Teachers.
Teachers.
Marin Montessori School, teachers only, and the gate...
Shall remain.
Shall, shall remain closed during times at which entry and exit is not, obviously, happening. Okay.
Maintenance access, but not as a parking full day, right? So, so a vehicle has to come in there, I could see that, but I, I don't see that they, they're not gonna park their maintenance trucks over there, that should not be the case.
Okay, I mean, that's, I'm trying to get clarity, so it's for teachers.
They can access it for, they pull a truck in there, a gardening truck, or whatever, right, during, but, as needed, but I don't know when that is. There is a sentence in here about landscaping, I think, maintenance.
Yes, there were, there were some, there are some pretty specific conditions in the initial study, especially working with assignments, the adjacent neighbors, in terms of when cleaning maintenance takes hap, takes place, and minimizing noise impacts when, when any service vehicles are accessing the school.
So I'm not clear, I mean, it, it says here, maintenance path is existing, so that they would not do the maintenance from the cul-de-sac. They would do the maintenance from the drive. I'd have to go back and look at the report to know what that said. Does anybody else have any recollection of that?
That it would not be done from the former, how, the former residence.
Do you recall that? Yeah, okay. So then, then that's what it stays as.
Okay.
It stays as for teacher...
Teacher parking only, that's fine. So in that, I think we would add that as a new condition of approval, maybe number 10.
All right. Dr. Bundy?
Yeah, I'm trying to follow this, and I think there certainly would be times when the, the former residents would need maintenance, repairs, new roofing, or things like that, and we should certainly allow that, those construction vehicles, or maintenance vehicles, to utilize that existing driveway for convenience, and have their tools and supplies and such there. So I would ask us not to be too restrictive.
I'm looking forward in the environmental report here.
But it sounds like what you're suggesting is consistent with what Sam said they want to do, right? Which is that it's only teachers, and it's only during school hours that they're parked there, and that the gate generally...
But it sounds like what you're suggesting is consistent with what Sam said they want to do, right, which is that it's only teachers and it's only during school hours that they're parked there and that the gate generally remains closed, right? That's what you're trying to address, is the safety issue. So maybe it's something like schools shall make every effort to, you know, ensure that those spots are only used by teachers in those classrooms during school hours. Is that consistent?
I don't want to be laborious too much here.
The only thing is, we keep hearing two different things, that it's teachers, and then the question is, is teacher in the classroom too restrictive? So the question is to make it, you know, I'm not sure the town will know how to enforce it, whether that's teachers in teaching in that particular classroom as opposed to teachers in general. So again...
I would probably also be more general than just say they will make every effort to keep the, it's a gate issue, right, that you don't want a lot of traffic.
It's traffic issue, it's people coming in and out of there. So it is related to teachers. When they do apply for Phase Two, they're going to have to access that for construction through there to some degree.
I can answer the question you were asking earlier, Chairman Chase. Page seventy-eight of the initial study, and one part of the mitigation measure is that landscape maintenance activities shall be limited to the hours of seven thirty AM to six o'clock PM on weekdays and between the hours of nine AM and six PM on Saturdays. No landscaping activities on Sundays or legal holidays. That's a mitigation measure, which is, you know, more or less a condition of approval.
Okay.
One of the conditions of approval is.
I was just going to say, my recollection also was that the, any trash from the former residents was going to go to another location to be picked up, so it wouldn't have trash being picked up there. And they were going to ask the cleaning personnel to do that early in the day and not go later, that that would be the first one that was done. So it was finished in quiet in the evening.
That's correct.
Okay. So we have a number of conditions of approval that have been added here, and you've written them down, Phil, and Adam, to a large degree. I have not. But we need a maker of a motion here to do that with the amendments to paragraph two and paragraph three and condition ten now, and the modifications to language that you have created. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay.
I think Adam and I and Joanne have captured everything, I believe.
Does anybody on the commission have any further commentary? I asked for a motion out of this. No?
No.
Okay. All right. So who will make a motion based on what we've just discussed?
I can make a motion, I just don't remember all the items. Or I can start.
Start the motion by reading what we are, the resolution, and then rattling off the...
I make a motion to let the town council adopt a mitigated negative declaration and approve a general plan amendment, a rezoning, an amendment to the existing use permit and design review to annex existing residential buildings at five one six four Paradise Drive, allow the construction of a new upper elementary classroom building, and site modifications at five two zero zero, five one six eight, and five one six four Paradise Drive, Marin Montessori School, with various amendments.
Those amendments are to paragraph two of the conditions of approval of the planning department, modifications to paragraph three of the planning department, limitations to the parking at the fifty-one sixty-four, and what was the last one, Phil?
Incorporating the changes in the errata.
Right, okay. Right, okay. That said, is there a second for this?
I have a second.
All right, then.
Okay, Commissioner Bundy.
Yes.
Commissioner Friedman.
Aye.
Commissioner Caldera.
Aye.
Vice Chair Metcalf.
Aye.
Chairman Chase.
Aye. So there you have it. There is, before this goes to the council, is there an appeal right on this? No.
No, I don't believe there is.
It's just going to go directly to the council. All right. It goes right there regardless.
There is not an appeal right for this.
Okay. So I think that it's safe to say that...
Just for clarification for the public, it's a recommendation to the town council. It'll be set for a public hearing, and notice will be provided to the public before that matter is heard by the council.
Right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Everybody, Marin Montessori School, it's going to be a good development there, I think. Thank you very much. All right, we'll take a five-minute break while the room empties.
Thank you.
Let's please resume the meeting. I would appreciate coming to order at this time. Thank you. We're going to pick up with item four B. This is fifty-one twenty-four Paradise Drive. This is also a continued public hearing to review project information, including new information from the applicant in response to commission direction raised at the August ninth, twenty sixteen public hearing, and consideration in possible adoption of an initial study mitigated negative declaration and approval of design review and environmental assessment applications for a private boat dock and lift at the rear of the single-family residence located at fifty-one twenty-four Paradise Drive. So, gosh, almost a year. So I know it's been through a lot. And Mr. Boyle, would you please take order away?
Yes. Yes, as you mentioned, this is a returning project from just under a year ago. The applicant has redesigned the boat dock, has worked closely with the neighbors in the redesign. The applicant is here with a presentation as well, so he'll probably expand on that. I'll give you a quick overview of it for those who weren't present or forgot what happened a year ago. This is the project location at fifty-one twenty-four Paradise Drive, just six or so houses east of Marin Montessori. The proposal, the background, the commission heard this back in August of two thousand and sixteen. Commission asked the applicant to work with the neighbors and with staff and consider moving the dock to the west, which they have done. Commission recommended that they look into shortening the dock, which they have done. Also, there'll be a condition added, there is a condition added that no materials will be stored on the dock. An agreement has been reached with the neighbor to the east regarding construction impacts to the neighbors' pilings during the construction of the dock. And also, again, work with the neighbors in the redesign process. The dock is a fixed, has a fixed pier walkway, it has a fixed pier head with a boat lift, aluminum gangway, and floating dock. Revisions is the, the new location is sixty-two feet from the residence to the west, sixty-eight feet residence to the east, not exactly in the middle, but getting closer. Size of the total pier structure has increased actually from four eighty to five sixty square feet, and that'll be illustrated, seen on the illustration. The floating dock itself, however, has been reduced from two hundred and seventy-five square feet to a hundred and sixty square feet. Aluminum gangway has been reduced in size from ninety square feet to sixty-six. The boat lift has changed from a lift that kind of holds the boat up from the bottom to a hoist crane type of lift. Three additional piers will also be required for a total of ten piers will be required to install this new dock, anchor this new dock. In the SEQA document, initial study and mitigated negative declaration was revised based upon the revised project description. That revised document is in your packet. The planning consultant that did that document did not feel it needed to be recirculated, as well as our town attorney also did not feel it. Because it didn't identify any additional impacts from the old dock to the new dock, no recirculation of that document was required. And no significant environmental impacts were, new significant environmental impacts were identified. There are mitigation measures addressing potential biological and construction noise impacts. That's the, the old initial study and the new initial study are the same mitigation. So the dock on the, the red dock is the old one, and the blue is the new. As you see, it's been moved west, it's been shortened. Instead of one long dock with the floating dock at the end, we have two shorter docks with one of them being floating and one of them being stationary. This is the original and the revised east elevation. Again, the original on top, and showing the longer single dock going down to the floating dock, and then the revised down below with both more, you know, parallel to each other. And the lift, you can see the lift at the end at bottom right. West elevation, original and proposed, again, fairly similar in change. Conclusions and recommendation, staff feels that the applicant has worked with the neighbors and staff to revise the project. The applicant has provided written support from adjacent neighbors to the east and the west. The revised initial study has been provided. The project meets all of the zoning district regulations, and staff is able to make all the findings for design review and recommends that the commission approve the design review application as well as the SEQA document. And that concludes my report.
Commissioners, Phil, any questions for Mr. Boyle?
No.
Dr. Bundy? No. Jennifer?
No.
Niccolo?
None, thank you.
All right, nor have I. So applicant engineer, please make your presentation.
Good evening. Peter Clark with Claussen Engineers, representing Huntley and Brooke Gordon. Phil's presentation was pretty spot on. I think I might just open it up to questions, but I'll just run through here. It's been forty-six weeks since our initial planning commission meeting, and I think you'll find that the presentation we have here in the proposal is very much a collaborative effort between the applicants and their neighbors, and we hope you find that as well. Just to run through what we're proposing, again, it's a fixed pier, floating boat dock, a boat lift, and it's a recreational purpose. We know where the site is, especially after the last two hours, so it's just down the road from the Montessori. The original proposal here, as you can see, the concerns that were addressed or we're seeking to address are as follows. Close proximity to the fifty-one sixteen neighbor to the east, potential privacy concerns, potential concerns with primary and secondary views, the total extent of the float, its extent outwards encroachment into the water, total mass and so on and so forth. As Phil mentioned, and I'll reiterate here, is the conclusion from the planning commission meeting was as follows, was to reduce the overall length of the dock, shift it towards the center of the property away from the closest residence on the east side, assess the applicability of moving the floating dock inward and those implications with regards to tide, provide a monitoring plan for potential impacts during pile driving relating to the neighboring residence, and hold an open meeting and a discussion dialogue between the neighbors and the applicant. So with that regard, with that in mind, we have our current proposal here that we believe achieves all those conclusions from the last planning meeting. The dock has actually, the pier has been shifted over towards the center, basically between the center of the two abiding residences. There's a seventy-foot offset as opposed to a forty-foot offset from the eastern residence. Pier has been, pier and floating dock have been shifted closer to the shoreline, nearly half of what it was originally proposed. Views have been less impacted, and to account to that, I'll backtrack slightly, we, instead of running the pier directly from the land side, we're going to cantilever it off the existing concrete foundation where it comes back into the center. And lastly, we'll have a pile driving monitoring plan that will seek to review any issues that may be of concern with neighboring residents during construction. To speak directly on that, this is a project that we have done on Mar East in Tiburon about eight years ago. As you can see, this is a vibratory hammer being driven piles directly under and near an existing residence. This is a similar situation what we'll be doing at this project. Like I said, the closest pile is seventy feet away, which is a substantial amount of distance, but we will conduct monitoring with the neighbors to the east. They'll have plenty of heads up of when the construction actually goes on. We will use, we've discussed using a construction transit, a survey transit, to focus in on a point on the Sanders home to make sure there's no settlement, any shifting to account for that. Again, this is just a comparison in scale of last August versus now, and again, with the cross-section. As you can see, it's, the scale's been, you know, it's been very much reduced. This is the area we'll propose to bring the walkway along the residence, along the concrete foundation, and then it will extend out from that center of the residence out into the water. Just to give you a quick recap on materials, nothing has changed substantially. We still have cedar rails, guardrails, the through-flow composite decking, which is a regulatory agency requirement to allow light penetration. The floating dock, which has been reduced in overall size and scope, will also have a center tray of this through-flow material. This is a collaborative effort with BCDC, who commented on this prior to them approving the project. This is a Davit-style boat lift as opposed to the forklift-style boat lift. There is a benefit to this that we find, is that with the forklift, as we discussed pretty at length last meeting, it does require that additional water depth to launch and retrieve a boat, whereas the hoist system requires no additional water depth. Basically, as the boat can float, it can go in and out. And again, the gangway is aluminum gangway with the through-flow slotted decking. I'd like to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. I'm going to start with Niccolo and ask him if he has any questions for you regarding this design.
I do. Hi. Since the original design, you reduced the length, the outward length of about fifty-two feet.
Correct, yes.
Because of this, did you lose significantly the potential of using your dock frequently and use your boat?
We did find that the mud flat in that area is very shallow, mildly sloping. So the difference between water depth at the original proposal versus the existing proposal now is fairly insignificant. So we'll, to answer your question, we will have a reduced amount of time for sure where we'll have water, but it's not as significant, and we felt that moving it back in was a more equitable solution with the discussions at the last planning commission.
So in your opinion, professional opinion and bias, real is a good compromise. Now, a loss, tremendous loss.
It's a good compromise, yes, for sure.
Thank you.
All right, Niccolo, thank you. Is that all you have to ask?
Yes.
All right. Jennifer?
My, thank you. My question is actually kind of along those lines as well. I thought one of the reasons why we talked about, or why you guys suggested the longer ramp last time was, had to do with the number of times... the longer ramp last time was, had to do with the number of times a day that the floating dock would be sitting on the mud flat, which was, I think, a pretty negative environmental impact. But then I read in the report for this new proposal that it is insignificant, that it will only be resting on the mud flats a couple times a month. So what changed? Is it just that that fifty feet didn't actually matter that much, or, okay?
Yeah, we, we assessed that the, the actual change in elevation between where it was proposed before versus what it was, is proposed now is maybe six inches or so. So the effect of that was insignificant, which, it will sit on the mud flat for sure, but we, in answering your question, I'm gonna go around and say that we brought this to BCDC's attention, because they had an initial concern of sitting on the mud flat.
Right.
And they had recommended some pretty far-fetched solutions, with one of them including what they call a dock stop, which would catch the floating dock from going aground. And we explained to them that we're in a dynamic situation. We know that the ferry goes by every day, some thirty-some odd times a day, that that dock would actually be constantly banging on that dock stop. So the compromise from that standpoint was to put the center tray of light transmitting material in the floating dock.
Okay.
So it would mitigate, mitigate the light transmittance there, but the, the fact that it's sitting on the mud flat, it still remains, and they were receptive to that.
So BCDC is basically indifferent between the fifty-feet difference and how frequently the floating dock would be resting on the mud flat?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. Dr. Bundy?
Thanks for that explanation. That was my question also, in thinking about future dock proposals that might come before us, though that's good information on that. I did go out and, and look at the site on Sunday and talk to the Sanders, and this looks like a, really a good solution, and followed all of the recommendations we had.
Dock at your house? Phyllis, any questions?
No questions. I think all of our concerns were addressed, and it appears that the neighbors are satisfied.
It appears that way. We'll find out. I just got a question about this function of the little David crane. So if the crane is over there, how do you get out of the boat and then lift it? So you, you, you pull the boat up to the floating dock, get out, and then somehow tie it off to the pier's or the, the David cable, or how does that function then?
So there'll be two control points, two attachment points. You would lower the, the Davits, the hooks essentially, down to the boat level. You'd grab those, you'd hook it on, and then you'd hit the button and you'd go for the ride. So you ride it up and down.
I see.
Yeah. There'd be a, you know, there'd be a less than a footstep off between the side of the boat and the edge of the pier.
I don't wanna know. That's a site safety issue, but never mind. Okay, so I've read it thoroughly. There's a lot of paper that this project has generated. It appears that BCDC has signed off. Have you had positive contact or any contact with the other regulatory engine, or agencies that you mentioned, or mentioned in the report? One is the Army Corps of Engineers, and then there's the Special Bay Area District. Have they had a preview of this project?
They have, yeah. We, we actually started this process with the JARPA agencies, so there's the Regional Board, BCDC and Army Corps, and each of those agencies have chimed in on this project and would move towards approval. What we'll do, if approved, we will issue a revised set of conditions to all three agencies.
Okay.
Immediately following.
San Francisco Bay Special Area Plan. That's a new one for me, but we'll find out about that.
That's one of, that's BCDC's bible.
I see. Okay, got it, got it. Okay, I can't wait to download that. All right. So no further questions for the, Mr. Clark, then applicant?
No.
Okay. Anybody else that wishes to speak on behalf of the applicant? No? Okay. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So now I will ask for the public comment on this project. It is time for that moment of either agreement or disagreement and expression of opinion. You have three minutes to do so.
I'm Alan Sandner at five-one-one-six, the house that we're talking about, just east of the project. And I simply just wanna thank the commission for extending this application so we had time to sort this out amongst the neighbors. I think that was a really wise decision, and we really appreciate it. And in turn, I wanna thank my neighbor for working with us and, on location and protecting our home, and that's about all I got. I think we're in a good spot.
Thank you. That's good to hear. Thank you very much.
Hello, Carla Condon, fifty-one thirty-two Paradise Drive. We live just westerly of Huntley and Brook Gordon, and I too wanna thank the commission for postponing the application and allowing the applicant to go further with the neighbors. I feel that the Gordons have made a really stellar effort to mitigate the impact and turn it into something that we will actually enjoy, providing he shares it with us. And anyway, I really wanted to officially, though, thank the commission and the Gordons for a super job. It'll be a nice addition to the neighborhood, and I'm glad that, that everybody was sensitive to the Sandners, because they're in a really unusual situation, and I think we feel confident that the application will be handled really well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's good to hear. All right. Anyone else make a public comment on this item? All right, with that said, we're gonna close public comment, bring it back up here to the commission to hear your thoughts about this application. Phyllis?
I think it should be approved, that it's met all of the conditions we put on it, and the neighbors are satisfied, and the regulatory agencies are satisfied. I think we should be satisfied.
All right, thank you very much. Dr. Bundy?
I'm ready to approve.
All right. Jennifer?
I think it's a good outcome, and I'm glad to hear that the neighbors are happy.
And Niccolo?
Completely in agreement. You guys really did, I mean, it's a perfect design. I mean, you mitigated all the problems really well, and it's gonna be an attractive design there. So I'm ready to approve it.
All right. Dare I say, maker of a motion.
All right.
I would approve resolution number sixteen dash oh-two-five for design review and environmental assessment of the application DR dash fifteen dash oh-two-one and PL dash two-oh-one-six dash three-three dash PLEA for private boat dock and lift at the rear of a single-family residence located at fifty-one twenty-four Paradise Drive.
And a second for that?
A second?
All right, let's hear the vote call.
Commissioner Bundy?
Aye.
Commissioner Friedman?
Aye.
Commissioner Caldera?
Aye.
Vice Chair Metcalf?
Aye.
Commissioner, Chairman Chase?
Aye. So let's hear the appeal.
Yes, there are appeal rights for this project, and within ten calendar days of this decision, an, an individual can appeal, and applications are available at the planning commission, at the planning department, and there is a three-hundred-dollar filing fee.
Thank you. I would just like to say to everybody in the room, thanks for working so hard on this, and that I'm glad to hear that there's an amenable solution to everyone. Thank you so much. It's a good thing to have happen. All right. So we'll, we'll just let you guys exit while, we'll take a couple minutes of silence. So that said, I'm glad to see that one on the road.
I wish more applicants would do that with the neighbors.
Adam, I didn't know if you wanted to copy that resolution that we would hand to Niccolo, or if it's just ready to hand to him as-is, you know?
We will, we should have a copy of it for our records.
So you should put it somewhere.
Come on, that, not, that not quite that important there, Niccolo.
Scan it and put it up. Okay.
Two years, come on. No, I'm just joking.
That said, I'll ask any of the other commissioners if they have any reports before I report on the town council.
I do.
No? Nobody has anything to say?
I do.
Oh, yes, please, go ahead.
Okay. I, yes, I've been in contact with Adam. It's that time of year again when we look at our rules and procedures, which are based on the state.
Sorry, if, if I make a suggestion, we can address sort of agenda items, and I talked to Commissioner Bundy about this before the meeting, just during the next agenda part of the reporting, under the agenda, so we.
You don't want me to say that we're going to change it at the next, make amendments to the next meeting?
No, so all I'm saying is that under seven A, three, there's three I's, that's the tentative agenda items for July eleventh. I think we should address potential upcoming agenda items at that moment of the agenda rather than during commissioner reports and announcements, which are just, as my understanding, limited to reporting out on basically any things that have occurred over the last several weeks or so.
In other words, on past and not future.
What's that?
On past and not future.
That's my understanding of reporting, yeah, reporting out on, on sort of events. But the, we'll, we'll come right back to you.
We'll be right there. Yeah. Okay.
The only reason why I mention that also, I, I think Commissioner Bundy also has a, an item he'd like to talk about as well.
Oh, okay.
So he can do it at that time.
In that same regard?
Yes.
Okay, the proposed items, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I will say that I attended the Tuesday, June thirtieth, June twentieth, meeting of the town council, and there was a, a primary focus on the budget for the meeting, but I will say that MTC, according to Diane First, is going for funding on the Nellan-Tamal-Vista study, right? So that they're, or they're getting some money to do some work. Would you clarify that, Adam?
On the Tamal-Vista between war, and Nellan?
Yeah, she said Nellan-Tamal-Vista study or work, so.
So Nellan and Tamal-Vista are parallel, you mean, parallel, the parallel streets?
No, no.
No, no.
No, perpendicular.
They're parallel.
They're parallel.
Right. So I don't, and then I, I, funny, on Nellan-Tamal-Vista, right. So, you know, part of that is money for Tamal-Vista and, and the, and the widened bikeway, and part of it is looking at the opening of Nellan from, from Pfeiffer then.
Yeah, that's been a, 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 that's, okay, that, yes, that's, that's a project that Public Works Department has applied for grant funding for in the past, has not received the grant funding in the past, but I think is still able to apply for additional grants, and I think that was what was being referred to by Mayor First at the last council meeting.
You're talking about where the water district offices are. That's Nellan.
There's a Nellan, yeah, there, behind it, on the other side, yes, near the highway.
That was open at one time, and they closed it because of traffic and the freeway, and now they wanna open it again.
So I, we may hear about that and then other application. So then, I, I can't say that there was anything really of note until we got to the budget, and as I mentioned earlier, it, it says here in the budget that for this year, they have one point nine million for Tamal-Vista Boulevard Corridor Bike Pedestrian Improvements. Eight-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars is a grant, right? And some, and it's identified as coming from the sales tax fund and the override, I believe. But then eight-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand dollars is a grant, and they're still looking for more money to do this. So according to their budget over the next three years, they've got through the, two four million dollars that need to be spent for the Tamal-Vista Corridor Bike Study. So according to this budget, they've got one point nine this year, then they've got another million next year, and then another one point four. So that's three, four and a half million dollars for the whole.
I think that's more than the study that would be also implementation.
Yeah, the work, a lot of the work, right? So, but the fact that they've got one point nine and eight-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars means that they're gonna actually move forward with creating physical designs for the bikeway, right?
The nine-hundred-thousand-dollar grant is for the physical, yes, so you definitely can get the physical designs underway. I think part of the future budgets that's described in the last meeting was, was based on some, hope for additional grants, grants received.
And, you know, I, I don't wanna just take up time with this stuff, but the, the items that they've got in budget for this year, including Casa Buena, one point seven millions, which we've heard about for a long time, and widen the street. I mentioned the Paradise stuff that has been discussed, and there were a lot of other things, including the LED pedestrian countdown signals that are gonna go into effect, but they all, a lot of these things that are in the next budget program are things that have impacted our decisions. Casa Buena completes streets and the Tamal-Vista corridor. So we've talked about that and always wanted some of this stuff. Beyond that, that was an amazing budget effort, but because there's a certain person in the audience, I just wanted to mention that we did go to the Tam Ridge Apartments and take a tour, and I think that, that it would be worth the, anyone's effort to go there and take a look at it, just to understand what the heck is there, so.
Happy to take you, Jane.
I still see studs and open walls and.
So, in any case, but it, it's quite a, it's nearing completion, and we were there, we saw it nearing completion. It's just, it's amazing to think it's actually gonna get done. So that's all I have to say.
But you didn't get the hat that they gave out to the press.
I didn't get the hat. I want the, Adam's got the hat. I want the hat.
Did you get the?
So.
Are they gonna do any, like, open houses for the town or anything like that?
Anybody from the town at this point can go for a meeting, go for, at the times designated. So they can go. I, I'm happy to try to coordinate it another time as well for other commissioners and other members of the public as well. We have been thinking about important people to invite on that, but it's also available for anybody to go to the leasing.
I definitely wanna go.
Go to the leasing office, and I think it's four to seven PM on weekdays, and then I think Saturday or Sunday, most of the day.
You were able to tour the models, though, as well, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we went for a swim. No, so anything else that you would like to add, Adam, to this?
To that item?
No, or any item at all? What do you wanna tell us under eight, seven, eight-two?
Oh, sure. A couple of items, so I think maybe the most significant, not that, we are obviously very sad to see Niccolo go off on his way, but we also will be joined by a new planning commissioner at the next meeting. The council did select, he was actually here earlier this evening, Charles Lee, to the planning commission. He's a, also a, I believe, a licensed architect as well, and has, I, I think, I'm not gonna do a proper, properly. to do a proper, properly introduce him right now. I can't remember all of his, his accomplishments and sort of qualifications for the job, but he's working, I think he mentioned to me, he was working in SFO recently on some projects and in Peninsula and some other things, so, and has been in Cordera, I think, for about five years, and lives down in Madera Gardens. So excited to have Charles join us. He'll be joining us at the next Planning Commission meeting, where we'll have Rebecca do the swearing-in, and that's, I wanted to report on that. Also, just some updates on some other items that the Planning Commission has recently reviewed but aren't finalized. So we are going to be bringing the lot coverage zoning amendment to the Town Council on July 18th, which has been, had to be postponed a little bit because of the budget, just wasn't time to put it on to the council agenda. And then I believe we're also, at that meeting, there was an appeal filed for 141 Crescent, which the Planning Commission approved not too long ago, I believe about six weeks ago. I forget what, it's probably in our minutes here, actually, which one. And I believe that will also be heard by the Council on July 18th, although there's not 100% finalized, but I think we're pretty close to...
Yeah, pretty close.
Okay.
Which one was that?
It's up on Christmas Tree Hill, Crescent.
Yeah, 141 Crescent was the one with the garage adjacent to the neighbor, and the neighbor had concerns that the garage was impacting his view, and that was the discussion.
Oh, God.
Okay. What's that? I think it was May...
Not the one where it was about the massing?
Oh, the meeting I missed.
Okay.
When I was ill, yes, that's the meeting I missed.
Okay.
Because that was also the budget hotel.
The property owner plays the cello. You may remember, he came in with his cello at the very end of it.
Okay.
Judith thought that would jog your memory.
What? Would you repeat that, please? What did you say, Phil?
The property owner owns a cello, and he brought his cello in at the end of the meeting, so Judith was saying that may jog your memories.
But you could, it's actually in the...
Oh, yes, 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 I know what you're talking about now.
It is, it was in the draft, so the minutes for May 9th that you'll be looking at this evening include that project.
The husband plays the cello, yes.
Oh, yeah, I do remember.
So the neighbor is the one appealing?
Correct, yes.
The neighbor uphill to the left is the appellant.
Yeah, understood, okay.
Okay, and that's, I think that's, that's it, that's all I have.
Okay.
Can I ask one question just about the lot coverage?
Yes.
So you bring it to Town Council on July 18th, and then are there several readings of it?
There's two readings, and then there's a 30-day period after, assuming that it gets approved after the second reading, before it's enacted.
So it probably doesn't get enacted at the earliest until, like, end of August?
Correct.
Okay. Or mid-September.
So for the ordinance, there'd be a first reading, and then two weeks later, at the next council meeting, there'd be a second reading. That's the meeting they would actually adopt it. The first one is an introduction, second one for an ordinance is an adoption, and the effective date is 30 days thereafter.
Okay.
So it's the last council, the second council meeting plus, really, you count from the next day.
So it's like the end of August, so, okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, council is meeting on the 18th of July, would be the introduction, and then the second meeting would be on August 1st, so it'd be end of August, early September.
Okay, thank you.
All right, then, so now comes our tentative items, so proposed and items.
Should we do it now? Okay. At our meeting on the 11th, it will be the time for us to reaffirm our rules and procedures, make any amendments. Remember, they're based on state codes and our own practices, and that is also the meeting when we elect the officers for the year. The, I've discussed this with Adam, and it's basically just putting in some wording that is our practices adding, wording about setting appointments with neighbors, and the disclosure of meeting with applicants and our neighbors, which, you know, we do. And then, in accordance with the Public Records Act, clarifying the wording directly out of the code, and I gave Adam a copy of the code, of what materials are considered public records, so we'll have the definition in there, and them listed and stuff, so people can see that. So as I say, all the updates are essentially updating and clarifying our current practices.
So that's a...
And recently, somebody was questioning Phil about when we have a continued hearing, if people could speak again. I'm sure you've seen the emails in the files with the Montessori school, and Phil was able to refer to our rules and procedures, saying that we distinctly say anyone could speak on any item that appears on the agenda, so that's why it's important that we do have these things in writing, because questions come up at times.
Just sort of a point of order a little bit, I mean, there is specific language in our current rules and procedures about placing an item on the agenda, and generally that talks about making a request to the Planning Director to have an item placed on the agenda 21 days in advance. I think at, what we're doing here is sort of allowing Commissioner Metcalfe, or having Commissioner Metcalfe is bringing forth a request to the rest of the Commissioners, or informing the rest of the Commissioners that that's something you would like to see on the agenda. And I think while confirmation of that request, or at least concurrence of that request, is not necessarily required per the rules, I think, I would say that's generally the practice of the, of the Commission, is to bring this forward at a meeting prior to the actual time you want to see it.
And that's why I'm bringing it up, and, but this is something annually, we should reaffirm the rules and procedures and this type of thing, and the wording that, since I'm going to put it together, the wording for adding an item to the agenda really had a lot to do with members of the public adding items to the agenda.
It also says Commissioner.
And Commissioners, too.
But, and I do note that it, there isn't, I don't think there's any specific date in which we say we are going to amend our rules and procedures, or review our rules and procedures, so...
We should probably put that into...
It doesn't necessarily have to happen at the next meeting if, for whatever reason.
Well, it should be at the time that we elect the officers. In other words, it's almost like an annual housekeeping meeting that I think the two of them would go well together.
So for the purpose of this time, you can talk about items you want on the agenda, not the particular substance of the matter. It's just for the purpose of getting items on and the general topic, so that we can provide adequate notice, but not actually discussing the details or the nuances and things like that. In your current rules, as Adam pointed out, is that once you make a request, there is some discretion for the planning staff to agendize it for a future meeting that, where there is adequate time on the agenda to address the issue. And that's certainly that you can ask staff and, for, you know, a specific date, depending on whether there's adequate time on the agenda, depending on the other items.
While requested for them, the, July the 11th, at the meeting where we elect the officers for the year, I think they should be done at the same time. As I say, it's kind of like an organization-type meeting, that organization issues we take care of at the beginning of the meeting.
Again, it's just a request, yeah, to get it on there. We have a big agenda, those two items, but...
We'll do what we can. I'll review it, obviously, and fill, Commissioner Metcalfe has made the request, and we'll do everything we can to sort of get it on the agenda as quickly as possible.
Yeah, as I say, it's not something that should take a lot of discussion, because it's our practice.
So with that said, we'll swear in the new Commissioner First, and then this will fall under...
It could go under our business item, generally, is my understanding.
Good. Dr. Bundy, is there something that you were going to request?
Yes, I think the Budget Inn brought up the issue of freestanding signs, and I would like to see if the Commission would be interested in looking at freestanding signs with the goal towards possibly limiting or eliminating those when they're not visible from 101, in favor of monument signs.
Again, not the substance, not the substance, just the discussion.
So just a request to the Commission to look at...
Freestanding signs and where they are applicable, where they should be allowed and not allowed.
You said that much better than I did.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Good. Okay, that would be...
I agree with that.
Good.
An agenda item, okay. So with that said, proposing anything else for agenda items, are we done with that? Anybody else have anything that they would like to see?
No.
No.
Okay, then let's go and wrestle with all of our minutes.
I'll move the minutes of April 25th.
All right.
As written.
Is there a second to that?
Second. Actually, sorry, I forgot, no, a question, rather, for Judith. On page three of that meeting, on my statement at the bottom, says, so I don't know if that's something that could be made illegal, said that I could support the variance, but I couldn't, the design review findings. There was a lot of talk back then, so I remember we went back and forth and so on and so forth, but at the end, I did approve it. So I don't know if I am illegal, because I couldn't make the findings, but then I approved it. So if so, then we strike out, but having difficulty supporting the design review, fine. I don't know, I mean, I'm just asking.
I think difficult, I think you're fine.
Doesn't make...
I think so. Because the vote actually reflects whether you were able to make the findings.
Got it.
You just said that it was difficulty, it didn't say that you...
That I couldn't make them.
Couldn't make them.
Very well, thank you.
Does that suffice, then, that you would second?
Then second.
Okay.
I'll quickly go through the roll call, I guess. Commissioner Bundy?
Aye.
Commissioner Friedman?
Aye.
Commissioner Caldera?
Aye.
Vice Chair Metcalfe?
Aye.
Chairman Chase?
Aye.
So then we go to the Planning Commission meeting minutes of May 9th, 2017, and Community Center lot coverage and the Budget Inn. So Phyllis was not here for that meeting, so...
So I have to abstain?
I can make a motion to approve them as they are listed.
I can second that motion.
Okay, then.
Okay, Commissioner Bundy?
Aye.
Commissioner Friedman?
Aye.
Commissioner Caldera?
Aye.
Vice Chair Metcalfe, same.
Abstain.
Chairman Chase?
Aye.
And then the Planning Commission meeting notes of May 23rd, 2017.
I'll move them as written.
Second.
Commissioner Bundy?
Aye.
Commissioner Friedman?
I need to abstain.
Okay, Commissioner Caldera?
Aye.
Vice Chair Metcalfe?
Aye.
Chairman Chase?
Aye.
Okay, then, so they would all, we would be caught up to date now with meeting notes. So with that said...
We just do a point of order, just going back through the minutes, the way that Mr. Boyle and I are reviewing them, just to clarify. Commissioner Caldera, on the April 25th, you actually did end up voting no on the motions that were made to approve the project.
On the 25th, eh?
Yeah, so you had made a motion to approve the variance findings, there was...
I think is what happened, was in that meeting, yeah, you, the variance vote and the design review vote were separated, and then the project vote was your third one, so you actually did, you did three votes. And the first vote was for the variance findings, and all were in favor of that. The second vote was for the design review, and Commissioner Metcalfe and Caldera voted no for that. And then for the project itself, for the whole application, I should say, Commissioner Caldera voted no, and the four voted yes.
So, yeah, I didn't see that, exactly. All right, perfect, thank you. Yeah, yeah, we're motion, motion.
All right, then, motion to adjourn.
I move.
Adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you.